Meeting of the Committee of the Whole.
Only ten minutes.
Scheduled for Tuesday, September 1st.
Conference will now be recorded.
2020 at 6:46 PM. A copy of the agenda for the meeting is attached here, too, and can be found at www.tinleypark.org. Pursuant to Governor Pritzker's Executive Order 2020-07, Executive Order 2020-10, Executive Order 2020-18, Executive Order 2020-32, Executive Order 2020-33, Executive Order 2020-39, Executive Order 2020-44, which collectively suspends the Illinois Open Meetings Act requirements regarding in-person attendance by members of the public body during the duration of the Hoover National Disaster Proclamation issued on June 26, 2020. The members of the Committee of the Whole may be participating in the meeting through teleconference. A live stream of the electronic meeting will be broadcast at a Village Hall pursuant to Governor's Executive Order 2020-43 and CDC Guidelines. No more than 50 people or 50% of the maximum capacity will be allowed in the council chambers at any one time, so long as attendees comply with the social distancing guidelines. Anyone in excess of maximum limit will be asked to wait in another room with live feed to the meeting until the agenda item for which the person or persons would like to speak on is being discussed or until the open floor for public comment. Public comments or requests to speak may also be emailed in advance to the meeting at, or to clerk's office at tinleypark.org or placed in the drop box at the Village Hall by noon on Tuesday, September 1st, 2020. Clerk Derry, will you please call the roll?
Trustee Berg.
Here.
Trustee Brady.
Here.
Trustee Brennan.
Here.
Trustee Galante.
Here.
Mayor Protem Glatz.
President.
Trustee Mueller.
Here.
President Vandenberg.
Thank you. Item two, consider approval of the minutes of a special committee of the whole meeting held on August 18, 2020. Are there any questions?
No. I'll make that motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Can we do our losing favor and just see if I can do the roll call? Can you take a roll call, please?
Trustee Berg.
Yes.
Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Brennan.
Yes.
Trustee, or Mayor Protem Glatz.
Yes.
Trustee Mueller.
Yes.
Motion carries. Item number three, discuss Brixmore incentive agreement. Dave, who's going to take that one?
Thank you, Dave. In your packets, you have Resolution 2020-R-085, which contains the redevelopment agreement between Brixmore IA Tinley Park Plaza LLC, in short, Brixmore, and the village with regard to the renovations of the Tinley Park Plaza Shopping Center, which is on the east side of Harlem, just south of 159th Street. The address is 15903 to 16205 Harlem. They are proposing renovations and upgrades to the plaza at an estimated cost of about $21.9 million. The project is further detailed in, in the memo that I provided, but for the village's assistance towards the project, the renovations would not be able to move forward, and the current tenant interest in locating in the center, and current tenant interest in the center would probably be lost and the shopping center would adversely be impacted, as well as the village. The village has offered financial assistance in the amount not to exceed $9.9 million or 50% of the actual project costs, whichever is lower. The assistance will be funded by a combination of TIF incremental revenues generated from the shopping center plaza alone and municipal sales taxes, the 1% regular municipal tax generated by the businesses located in the shopping center. Both, both prongs of the incentive are tied to a 10-year period. A maximum of $8.1 million will be from, in reimbursement for TIF eligible costs and repaid from the TIF increment generated, while the remaining, while the remainder currently at $1.8 million will be paid from incremental sales taxes. The mix of TIF-funded incentive and sales tax can change depending on what the actual costs end up being. However, the sales tax component of the incentive cannot exceed $2.5 million. Under our established fiscal policies with regard to incentives, we don't, we don't look to share sales taxes for monies that we're already receiving. Accordingly, with the develop, with the agreement, the sales taxes that are being, currently being generated by the shopping center are capped, are, a base is established with calendar year 2019, not unlike what is done with a, with a TIF establishing the frozen base. The base value for, for the new TIF that has just been created is also the 2019 tax year, so we're starting basically off of the same, same platform with both incentives. If a retail, if a retailer that is currently located in another location within Tinley Park relocates to the Tinley Park Plaza during the incentive period, we will be calculate, we will calculate the, the sales taxes that they had generated over the preceding 12 months, and that will be added to the base. However, in the, in the initial year when they move, we will prorate that base so that the base will, will only count the number of months of base comparable to the number of months that they're operating in the shopping plaza, so that there's, there's parity there. A little bit of history about the shopping center. It, development started about 1974 and then was expanded between 1984 and 1988. That expansion added the Waltz Food Store and Builder Square as, as primary anchors. Some facade and other site improvements were, were made in around 1992, and basically, although the names have changed through mergers and acquisitions and other things, Brixmore Property Group or their Brixmore IA Tinley Park Plaza LLC have been the beneficial owners of the, of the center since about 1995. In, in around 2003 to 2006, the south end of the center underwent some renovations, demolishing the former Builder Square site that had been vacant for several years, constructing a new outbuilding along Harlem Avenue, and reconstructing the tenant spaces at the south And in 2015, 2016, a similar project was undertaken at the north end of the shopping plaza, building another outbuilding mirroring what had been done in the south, as well as demolishing a portion of the, the building at the north end and creating additional parking. There is about 251,000 square feet of retail space in the, in the retail center now, including the two outbuildings. Of, of that, approximately 230,000 lies within the inline center along the east side of the property. Of that, about 36, 36%, 83,000 square feet is currently vacant, and there is possibility of additional vacancies, and this is where the, where the owners are looking to, to change that course and, and revitalize the center. The improvements, a year, they came to us about a year ago with, with an ambitious plan to, of renovations, and at that point, they had been considering a focus on creating somewhat of a dining and entertainment focus for the center. However, the intervening period with COVID and other events has kind of changed that course. Obviously, the renovations are still on, on track, and they now have some interest from some, some retail tenants that are, that they have under contract, that they are looking now to, to move forward with the project. Again, they still need our, our assistance in, in this effort. We've, we've, they initially had asked for a sharing of sales taxes, however, the, the request was way, far beyond our established policies for incentives, and we looked at the possibility that, that TIF could, could be a more effective tool in this process in addition to, in, in addition to sales tax. The sales tax alone did not provide the, the financial assistance that was required. Now we have the TIF in place, and again, we're, we're looking at incremental sales taxes. Their current project is, is going to demolish about 87,000 square feet of the existing center and, and then some, and reconstruction, which will, two, they've got two retailers under contract that will take about 63,500 square feet of the new retail space, and I think that hits the high points of, of the agreement. If you've got any questions, I'd be glad to, to assist, and representatives from Brixmore are, have connected remotely, and they are available for questions as well.
Trustee Brady, you have any questions?
No, sir.
Trustee Brennan?
No, just that, you know, I know it's an ambitious plan, but this is, you know, this is really the interestway to Tinley Park, so this is a, a much-needed facelift for that corner of town, and really looking forward to, to working with them. They've already done a good job of bringing in some of the, they've shown us what they can bring in for some of the retailers they already have, and some of the buildings they've already remodeled, so I think this is, this is a great step forward for us.
Trustee Mueller?
Yeah, I think Brad hit it in his memo. I think this agreement, the key to it is developers encourage to create the largest increment possible. That's how they get their incentive. I think that's great. I think we continue to encourage that, and we pay as we go, so I'm a big fan of it.
Mr. Vandenberg?
I'd just like to say, I think you guys have done a great job on it. I'm happy that it's going to be refreshed. I just, I just struggle with the percentage of, of money that they're receiving.
Trustee Galante?
That's kind of my concern, too. I have, I guess I had 20, 25% in my head that we like to keep incentives at off of, based on the percent of the investment from, from the developer, so 50% seemed really high to me. That's why I had asked about looking for this policy.
Sure, sure.
If that's, and I, you know, I see that is our max, but are we normally in the 25% when we?
A lot of our, a lot of our incentives have been in the, in the 20 to 25% of the, of the project cost arena. I believe with our automobile, with some of the more recent automobile refurbishment, you know, of the franchise dealerships, you know, we were, we were looking at, at, I believe, a third of the renovation costs as, as a cap on the, on the incentive amount. So it, it has varied depending on, on the particular circumstances, and I would argue with the level of vacancy that was in this center, which I, I had been concerned about for some time, it warrants a little going beyond the, the established policies to, to keep this, this, this center viable into the future, as well as keeping it from, from being a, a drag on, on other retail centers in that area as well.
Thanks, Brad, for that great explanation. As you know, I'm opposed to the taxpayer funds being used to fund a corporation such as this, and therefore, I wish you luck with it. Village budget being in freefall as it is, I don't feel like this is the right move at this time.
Trustee Glatz, just really one comment, and then just one question. Yeah, again, just as a reminder, this is really all coming from the increment from the project, so obviously not from any of our current costs, but I, I think if the board so desires is to give the all virtue, the two minutes of the project and what they've been looking at, so I, I know they're, they're on the line, right? Yep? Okay, so Andrew and?
Hello, are you there?
We've got Andrew, Andy, and Mike Lowey on the, on the line.
Yeah, we were having a different topic with the voting meeting, so we, Andrew Scott and Mike Lowey and Andrew and Andy Valtter, so. I'm the director of redevelopment for Brixmore Property Group, and what, just for the benefit of the board, anybody that's unfamiliar with Brixmore, Brixmore Property Group is a publicly traded REIT that invests in open-air shopping centers, primarily grocery-anchored shopping centers. We own approximately 400 centers across the country comprising nearly 70 million square feet. We want to own quality shopping centers, and we make investments in, in great real estate. Tinley Park is great real estate, and it's an asset that we really believe in and intend to own for a long time. So, you know, I don't, I don't think I need to tell the board, you know, that the, the center struggled for many years. It's really struggled due to a lack of prominent anchor tenant, and as Brad had noted, we've had many different plans over the years, pursued many different redevelopment options, but to no avail. Most recently, we did try to proactively market a restaurant-centric redevelopment plan, and we did receive positive feedback and some preliminary interest, but the concerns were that there wasn't a national prominent anchor to drive the traffic to the center, and then, of course, also the compounding issues of COVID. So fortunately now, we have an established grocer who will anchor this redevelopment and drive the traffic that these other restaurants and retailers want to see. So when this redevelopment's complete, we believe our investment will turn this struggling property into a Class A shopping center that we expect will attract those high-quality retailers and fill the vacant seats plagued this center for many, many years. So, you know, Brad did a great job of, of kind of giving an overview of, of our project. You know, the big thing that, you know, I really want to emphasize is that the 90,000 or the 87,000 square feet that we're going to be demoing is primarily entirely vacant, and we're going to be building back brand-new, new construction of nearly 70,000 square feet of anchor tenant space. We're also going to be refreshing the entire property. You know, we really didn't want to, we, we wanted to make sure that we did not cut any corners in this project. We're going to repave the entire parking lot. We're going to have all-new irrigated landscape throughout this portion of the center. And probably the most dramatic, you know, difference that I think we're going to see outside of obviously the two new anchor spaces is the remodel of the facades for the north portion of the small shops. You know, so this is, this is an investment that has needed an anchor, and fortunately, we have that anchor to be able to help drive this project, and, you know, we're, we're looking forward to, you know, hopefully moving forward with this soon, and, and, you know, with that, I'll maybe turn it back over to you guys and, you know, answering questions that you may have.
And I, and I just bounce off of what Andrew was saying there, in that the new, the renovated spaces that they've created between, you know, 2003 and, and more, and about 2016, they've, they've been very successful in getting those spaces occupied, and they remain almost fully occupied at this point. So, you know, I, I truly believe that their plan to, to renovate these older spaces will, will, will revitalize the center likewise, and, and we will see a, a great, a great project come out of this.
Brad, can you just give a real brief description, so we, of the difference between taxpayer money and the TIF and how this works?
Well, thank you. So with the TIF, you know, it freezes the, the base EAV at its, at its value at, at the time the TIF is created, and we've, we've been, we've confirmed with the, with Cook County that that base will be 2019. I'm happy to, to know that it's, it's going to lock in with 2019 because A, it's a known number, and B, 2020 is, is a reassessment year for, for the south end of Cook County, which we don't know what's going to happen with that yet. So it's, it's better to, better to have locked into the number that we, that we presently know. It's, it's a little higher than, I was, I was initially hoping that we would be able to lock into 2018. 2019 is a little bit higher, but it's still okay. We'll, it'll work. So any, any increment that is generated from, from the TIF side, or any increase in value from the TIF side, that portion of the property taxes comes into the TIF, and, and under this agreement, we are looking exclusively at the increment that is generated by the shopping center by itself to, to fund that incentive. So it's not, you know, all of the other taxing bodies that receive monies from property taxes still receive monies on an ongoing basis based off of the, the value that existed in, that exists in 2019 and will continue to do so going forward. If their, if their rates change, they will still receive increase in their levy, or increase in their dollars based on that increased rate, based on that, on that portion of the value. But any increment that is created will go to the TIF and will support this incentive. And the, and like, and we're doing, we're doing the same thing with the sales taxes. The sales taxes that we are receiving, not basically receiving now, we will continue to receive to, to fund our general operations, which we, which we've used, use those revenues to support our operations for many years. So we, our operations do not get impacted by, by this agreement. It's only any new dollars that are created, and again, we're, you know, we're hopeful that, that the tenants that they have under contract and, and the other tenants that are yet to come will generate additional, additional dollars to the center, as well as the, the tenants that are in there now with, with new anchors and, and new revitalization of the center will also do better because people will be, will come to, to shop and, and go from, from one store to the next.
Last question, since you're, you're the TIF guru. That number of the incentive.
Yes.
There's, in order for them to hit that number, they have to be hitting on all cylinders. Would you, would that be safe to say?
Uh.
I mean, it's very possible that number may never even come anywhere near that.
It's possible, but yes, yeah. As I, as I, as I did note in the memo, you know, the, a lot, a lot of, a lot of the risk is on them to, that, that's, that this, that this project is successful so that it does generate the increment to support the, the requested incentive.
So you're not giving them technically $9.9 million? If they do okay, they could be getting 2 to 3 million. If they do well, they could be getting 4 to 5. If they do, they hit it out of park, they could hit, possibly hit that 9.9?
Precisely.
Okay. Any other questions from anybody?
So it's 9.9 plus the two, there's, and also the, the sales portion of it?
No, no, it's, it's a total, it's a, it's a maximum of 9.9. A portion being funded from TIF, 8.1, and 8.1 plus 1.8 is the 9.9. So a portion is going to come from TIF increment, the other portion is going to come from sales tax. But let's say, let's say that the, the eligible costs are 7 million, then the sales tax could be up to 2.5 million to, to compensate, and if, and if, if they were, if the eligible costs were 7 million, plus the 2.5 would bring us to 9.5, they wouldn't quite hit the 9.9 cap.
And if their numbers doubled what your projections were, it's still 9.9?
It's still 0.9, 9.9, correct.
My only issue is the percentage.
And quite frankly, if the, if the, if the costs were, were greater, it actually, you know, with the concern about, you know, being 50% of the project costs, it actually improves that ratio, reduces it down to more, more of our typical levels that we've seen in the past.
And without it, possibly that strip mall just could keep deteriorating.
Yes.
Okay. Anyone else?
That is, that is my biggest fear.
And there's nothing up front, right?
There is nothing up front.
Only as you earn, take as you want.
As you go.
Make it, make it happen, make it rain.
You don't make it? You're getting, you're getting powder.
Yep.
Anyone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to move that to the Village Board.
Anyone want to second it?
I'll second.
We'll give it to Bill, Trustee Brady, since he's louder, Kristen. Can you take a roll?
Trustee Berg?
No.
Trustee Brady?
Yes.
Trustee Brennan?
Yes.
Trustee Galante?
Yes.
Trustee Glatz?
I am a yes on the project, I, I'm a no on the amount, so I would say no.
And Trustee Mueller?
Yes.
Motion carries, right? 4-2?
Yes, 4-2.
Thank you. Item number five, or four, sorry, I skipped until I saw you standing there.
Sorry.
Discuss process for awarding of a business license for adult-use cannabis facilities.
Good. Thanks, Trustee Glatz. So as we're all aware, the board's taken the appropriate steps to allow for a adult-use cannabis establishment in town. As there's only one license available, staff is looking for some feedback before we move forward. There's different ways that we can award this license, one being a lottery system and one being more of a merit-based system. So if we were to go with the lottery system, minimum criteria would have to be developed to determine the eligibility to participate, and appeals process would have to be created as well, and then other criteria would go along with that. Another approach we could use, again, would be more of a merit-based system. We would develop minimum criteria and request business license applications we turned in with a business plan, which displays the business's ability to meet the given criteria. Some of the criteria that, that we started to discuss, and, you know, the list can be adjusted as needed.
What are you doing, Dave?
Phone call over. Does that phone call end it? Have you ended on the?
I think so.
Oh, there, that was a bad noise.
Dave, can you let them know that it passed then, or that it's going to the board meeting? Did you guys hear? Ted?
They'll, they'll reconnect the, the board here. Okay, go ahead, Hannah.
So again, if we go, if we were to go with more of a merit-based system or merit-based approach, some of the criteria that we would want to be considered could include proven experience with other locations, a security plan, whether or not a license has already been obtained from the state, or if they're in the process of obtaining a license, the local presence in the Chicagoland area, and past convictions, outstanding fees to any public agency, et cetera. So really, we're just looking for feedback as we've had, you know, multiple people and companies who are interested in bringing their business to town, wanting your opinion before we begin to move forward with this process. And counsel, I don't know if you have anything else to add, I know these processes can be a bit intricate sometimes, so.
Yeah, I think you, I think you hit it on the head, Hannah. Most towns have gone either the lottery route or some type of merit-based thing. Whichever way you go, especially the merit-based thing, you just want to be clear in your criteria. A lot of times, the, the applicants here will have to have zoning in place before they, or at least an agreement or something with the town before they go down and try to get their state license, so if you require a state license, you might narrow the field there pretty significantly, or I guess, or you can, if there is so much demand and you think there's more than, feasible for more than one shop, you can say, we're going to do one this year, maybe look at adding another one in a year or two or things like that, so I think, you know, your staff is certainly on it, as they have been from the beginning of this passage of this law, so whichever route you guys decide, I think they'll get you, will get you good criteria and whatnot.
Thanks, Pat. I'll go first. I much prefer a merit base where you're judging them, and if they're local, I don't want it, I don't want someone that's just, that has, that's not invested in the town. I'd much prefer the merit with being some type of locally based, and also having a license, like Pat just said. You may choose someone, and you're going to have to wait until they release more licenses to even see if they get one, and then you could be starting over again six months down the road, so I'm in favor of the merit-based. Trustee Brady?
Since we only have one license to give, I would have to agree with Trustee Glatz that I like the merit-based system. I think that makes better sense.
Trustee Brennan?
I, I agree with both of you guys. I, I think that, you know, again, we only have one, I think this is going to be a partnership, so, you know, I think we should be able to dive deep into who we're going to be, you know, allowing to have this one license that we got, so I think this, the merit base makes the most sense.
Yeah, if I'm wrong, I don't want to be trying to call someone down in Florida.
Yeah, if I'm wrong, I don't want to be trying to call someone down in Florida.
Trustee Mueller?
Yeah, I disagree with the lottery system. I like the merit system. I think one of the criteria that we're probably missing here is their plan to engage with the community and how they ensure that they're a partner in the community, as kind of Bill was alluding to. But I think that should be part of their plan as they present it to us. So, the rest of the criteria, I think, look great, especially the security plan. I think that's probably going to be one of our residents' biggest concerns.
Great ideas, Mike. Mayor Vandenberg?
I'm kind of indecisive on that issue. I'm not really in favor of having these in general. I suppose if they decided, I think the merit base is certainly the most fair option. But I really haven't heard suggestions except for Trustee Glatz regarding, you know, homegrown, kind of locally-owned shops. I think we need to build on the criteria of what we're exactly looking for and really, like, it's not to make it black and white. This is it. This is the criteria they're related. So, I implore you all to bring that and work on it. But that's just my sense.
Thank you. Trustee Galante?
I agree on the merit-based. I'd like to see, you know, if anybody in first Tinley residence, I would hope that would gain more points. You know, the rest of the criteria looks fine, too.
Trustee Berg?
Thank you, Trustee Glatz. I'm not sure what a lottery would entail. It doesn't make any much sense to me and why would anyone use it. But I do like the fact mostly that security is important, as Trustee Glatz mentioned, and Trustee Mueller, that I never thought about having a security guard in the building before until he, Michael, mentioned that. And I really am bored with that 100%. And I think that's something, I don't know if a lottery doesn't have that or whatever.
It'll be part of the criteria, but a lottery just, lottery is, it's like picking a ball for the lottery.
Yeah, there would be minimum criteria for you to even enter the playing field and then, you know, everyone's name sort of gets thrown into a hat and...
And close your eyes.
Could it possibly be a blended system? I mean, what if you had 15 or 20 applicants and five of them are local residents? I mean, and they all have the same merit bases. At what point, and how are we making that decision?
I think that's what Hannah's saying. You could have minimum criteria just to get in the lottery. The question is, did you, even if it's down to five, do you want to believe that? That's easier, but I mean, you're not necessarily then picking maybe the one that you want. Certainly, the pure merit system is going to be some more work because you'll have to have background.
And again, some of what we're looking at is the criteria. So, if you're looking at something that Trustee Mueller mentioned as community engagement, the merit-based system may give you a little bit more of the ability to look at factors like that.
And I think it's worth doing the extra work. Hannah never minds to do extra work, seems like. She has enough, she wears enough hats around here. I would much rather do the extra work and make sure we're getting the right person, since we're only doing one.
Agreed. Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
What are we making motion for?
We just have to give direction.
So, I think the next step, we'll start preparing the criteria a little bit more. Give it to you guys for a look, but I think the direction.
Yep, thank you.
Thanks, Hannah.
Thanks, Hannah.
Item number five, demolition, 7050-171. Who's doing that, Kimberly or John?
I'm doing that, thank you. We just here, Community of Elton Tarrant wanted to bring attention to a property we've been dealing with for quite some time, almost three years now. The property at 7050 171st Street is continuing to be in disrepair and deteriorating. We've been trying to work with the owners in getting that property fixed up. They have submitted plans to the building department only due to the fact that we've been taking them to court for the past couple of years to get the property redeveloped. They have been trying to market it, but it's in quite disrepair that, you know, no tenant's quite ready to commit until the improvements are made. And they have racked up some fines with the village still unpaid as of date, about $13,000. We're at the point where we would like to take the necessary steps through our attorneys to file for demolition. As this property is a nuisance, we have adjacent businesses that are complaining to us. There's a daycare that constantly is concerned that they have a vacant building next to them. It's just, it's bringing the area down. We're not getting movement from the property owners. There was recently a contract purchase, which fell through, which the staff here was working diligently to try and make that happen because this contract purchaser seemed to be willing to make these improvements. And this ownership is just not really being that cooperative. So, we want to put the pressure and get this building repaired or demoed, but we'd like to start taking those necessary steps. Similar to what we've done in town and some other properties last year, we got the authorization with a home in the downtown area. This is probably one of our larger buildings that we are looking to get some action on.
Do we know if that daycare center was talked about closing?
I have not talked to them individually personally on that. I don't know.
Okay. And do we have any type of engineer estimate on the cost?
We do not. We would have to start getting that information, but the next step's just putting the pressure on them to take action. I do have in the budget about $25,000 that was left in the budget for something, knowing that there might be a potential demolition in the village's future.
Do you remember, John, I know it was a while ago, or maybe even Jake, we did that, we did that building across from Subway? Wasn't that in the low twenties? On Oak Park Avenue?
I think that was Chicks, right? Former Chicks. Oh, the house, we did a, yeah, we did a house just under $20,000 by the new South Street Boulevard project.
The one that's probably, closest comparable would be on 171st Street crossing the...
The post office.
I was thinking the black building, the old cat, the old cat. Patterson's old office, well, across from Patterson's old office. But that was, I don't recall what that was, but that was like five years ago.
That's some time past, yeah.
And this is bigger.
And this is bigger.
Yeah, it's huge. Well, in the H2, you might be dealing with a lot of asbestos, but...
That was my next question.
That's what, if you run into asbestos, the cost goes through the roof, essentially, with the pricing.
Maybe we could be looking at $50,000, $60,000.
But you could do an asbestos test beforehand and you get an estimate of what you're doing.
How long is, I mean, I recall the sign going up that they were, like, redeveloping it less than a year ago. So, I mean, how long have we been waiting?
Since I've started working here, so it's over two years. They've kind of, the previous planner, when Stephanie was here, had gotten their facade approved. And then they came in wanting to do just some partial work and we were telling them, you know, well, you've got some other work to do. And then it's just been ongoing back and forth ever since. There's definitely, it's a project that's definitely in the hole, probably. There's some, you know...
Well, yeah, and I think you need to add at least four or five months to it as well. Developers in general are encouraged because of economic times. Yeah, I mean, I just recall there being, I just, I thought there was a conversation that we had within the last year, that they were looking at demo permits and looking at not moving half the building apart because, I mean, equity was a big issue there.
Yeah, that was, that was the contract, there was a new purchaser that was going to buy it off of the current owner to do that. And then those negotiations took off. The current owner would not give an extension to the contract purchaser.
So, there has been some type of interest in that. I mean, the other properties that we've done in the past literally have been vacant for 15 years. They had owners, and one owner, I don't even think we were able to find, but the other owner, we, they just were like, yeah, we don't know. Just do whatever you want. I mean, it sounds like these are, they're trying to flip it or sell it or do something to get out of it, it appears at least. Right?
They presented, they had a contract to buy it within the last year.
Clearly, they're trying to do something.
Well, they have to do something on it now. They have legitimate building safety concerns and they're doing absolutely nothing. We've asked them to repair, there's holes in the roof that, I mean, there's some serious life safety issues that we're getting no, no action on. They're just letting the building sit.
So, they're catchy, they're out of, they're not going to do that, what was presented?
No, that contract purchaser is...
They're gone?
Has walked away.
Because a part of that, the plan commission they presented, they were tearing down, I think it was 9,000 square feet because it was not safe.
Anybody else?
No, I mean, my biggest concern would be the safety issue with it being next to a daycare. And, you know, that's the biggest thing. But I also have a concern on the cost, too. So, you know, so, we have any idea on that? If, like Pat was saying, if we could get an idea, maybe a test, to find out, you know, what it's going to cost as far as, you know, if the costs are going to skyrocket because of the asbestos issue that...
And just to clarify, the authorization to go forward with a dental complaint doesn't, you know, it's a complaint. I mean, it means we go into court and they can show up and they can tell the judge, we're going to fix this, 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 and this. So, that's always a possibility. It's not a, you know, snap our finger and go knock things down. But, you know, that might spur them, possibly.
That's what we're hoping, that we're getting no response or action towards.
Who are you on?
We're serious, SISC.
Who are you on?
SISC Holdings.
Holdings?
SISC Holdings.
I'll see.
How would this spur them on if we took the burden and knocked the building down for them and make it a lot easier, wouldn't it?
I'm saying, and again, generally, I don't know this owner. I don't know the history, but to fix it, you know, instead of knocking it down, maybe, you know, maybe the court complaint is the one that gets them. I don't know. But I'm just saying, it doesn't automatically, if you authorize it, doesn't automatically mean it's coming down. It just, we start the complaint process. Likelihood, likelihood.
But when we knock it down and we pay that cost, we put a lien on the property.
A lien on the property, correct.
So, that when they sell it...
A closable lien.
Yeah. So, it's not like...
And it's a priority lien as well.
Correct. So, in my opinion, the life safety issues and then spurring them onto action is way outweighs, you know, I know the costs are important, but we've got to be good to the other businesses in that area as well.
Kimberly, did we put up the fence or did they?
They did because we were taking them to court to submit a building permit and take action on that building permit. So, then, basically, after that period, they started some demo work, but essentially, they just put up a fence and started cleaning it up, but really have not done anything. It was just kind of a...
Just for show?
Yeah.
Seems like court's the way to spur this place into action.
So, are you looking for, Dave, looking for a direction and move it to the board?
Direction just to move forward with the action. Trying to get more into the demolition clause.
I agree.
And if we get to court...
It was a laundromat at one time. I'm sure it has chemicals.
We could ask to have it secured. You know, there's remedy short of a full demolition. So, if there's, we could draft the complaint and start working down that road, if that's okay, and send them a letter and give them a copy of it. And then see what goes.
So, you want to roll call or something for it? What do you want? What do you want us to do?
Bill? Trustee Brady?
Fine.
Brennan?
I'm good with it.
Mueller?
I'm good, all the way up to the demolition resolution, so.
We'll come back to you before that.
Yeah, I mean, we're going to find out some more information, right? If it's got asbestos and there's some more, it'll come.
Mr. Berg?
Yes.
Okay. There you go, Dave. Next item, item six.
I'd like to discuss amending Title III, Chapter 31, Section 29 of the Tinley Park Municipal Code entitled Village Clerk as Village Collector. In the early days of Tinley Park, the small size of the community necessitated a degree of overlap in the duties of the clerk's office. In addition to being the keeper of the records, the village clerk also served as village collector. Title III, Chapter 31, Section 29 of the Village Municipal Code describes this role and calls for additional funds to augment the clerk's salary for the oversight of financial functions, such as the collection of licensing, vehicle sticker, and parking fees. Ordinance 84-0-070 specifically provided for this compensation when it passed on December 18th, 1984. In the staffing level study conducted in June of 2017 by the Matrix Consulting Group, it was recommended that the, open quote, "village transfer financial functions performed by the village clerk to the treasurer's office," end quote. And that was taken from page 31 of the study. In addition to ending weekend service and eliminating a commission secretary position, the clerk's office subsequently affected a complete transferal of all staff conducting financial functions to the treasurer's office last year. It is my understanding that the salaries of elected officials cannot be changed while in office. I am therefore recommending that the village draft an ordinance to take effect on May 1st, 2021, that would eliminate the clerk-collector office from the code of ordinances and eliminate the additional pay received by the clerk for collector's duties.
Thanks, Kristen. Any questions?
What is the salary and what's it going to change to? What's it proposed to change to?
Well, the collector's additional amount is approximately $417 before taxes. So, that would be eliminated after May 1st, 2021.
That's a pay period?
That's, yeah, elected officials are paid once a month.
So, $400 a pay period?
The stipend for being collector is an extra $5,000 for the total compensation for the clerk. So, the proposal would be eliminating the $5,000.
So, 15th goes to you.
Well, there's...
A year, right?
I think, I think, I think if that's, if the functions of the collection have transferred fully to the finance department, this is the absolute right move. Just a little ordinance cleanup. I think we remove probably, I don't know how it's exactly written, whether it's collector, but we take whatever the collector duties were out in the clerk's office, which were given by ordinance of his board. Can you take it away? I'm sure they probably overlap heavily with the duties of the treasurer or your office, Brad. So, it's probably, it's probably one quick ordinance. There's probably not a lot to do. And then obviously, you know, we'll indicate for the budget the salary change in the right window, you know, before an election, when elected officials can do that.
Thanks for bringing that up, Kristen.
That's why the clerk is bringing that up now.
Right.
Being within that required window.
You guys got anything else? Diane, anything else?
No, just, Brad, you got, you're able to handle that, aren't you? Without extra people or...
Yes, it's working out very well.
Great, Ben.
Is there a motion?
To move it to the village board meeting tonight? I'll make that motion.
Or whatever.
Up to the next village board meeting?
I think we have direction, you know.
It's a burden.
We'll bring it up for you. It'll be at your next meeting.
Item seven, Dave, you taking that one?
Sure, this is our annual renewal of our lobbyist contract. We had two different lobbyists last year, but basically, the fees and essentially the duties have remained pretty much the same. Obviously, their main role is to help us with both state and county legislative efforts. A lobbyist, really, the role can change from year to year just depending on what the village issues are. Last year, probably our two biggest issues were dealing with Cook County, 175th Street, and getting grant money from the county to help reconstruct our county roads. from the county to help reconstruct our county roads. And of course, the on-again, off-again negotiations of the mental health center. So, and again, that, that, that work changes every year, but really the contract is the same. This would be from June, back to June to, to the next year. And so if the board's okay with this, this would go on the next agenda.
Any questions?
I have a question.
Go ahead, Jake. That's right. You done, Jake?
Yeah.
Um, I was just curious, do all, do most villages have a lobbyist on paid staff? Is that a normal standard?
A community of our size, I would say it's a norm, you know, if you're a community of five, seven thousand, you probably aren't gonna have one. You know, it's larger communities, and I think especially, it's not only the size of the community, it's the complexity of the issues. Frankly, you know, Cook County, South suburbs, you know, we, we need, I think, all the help we can get to, to get, you know, get our way in both Springfield and, and downtown, so. I, I think having a lobbyist, I think is a good investment, but.
Can we start maybe either getting information that is being worked on and possibly can we have him, give direction for this person to work on stuff that we may, you know, and they're important also?
Yeah, yes and yes. Yeah, in fact, I talked with Tom two weeks ago about starting to give us a quarterly report. You know, we do have discussions, there's a discussion later on tonight about some direction I would ask the board to give that's gonna involve the board group, so, but if there's other things that you're thinking of, you know, that you'd like to see them work on, let's, yeah, just, just give me your, give me your ideas.
I think just getting back to the original quarterly is, and certainly, I mean, as they get back in Springfield here in September and October, I think, you know, any type of information coming out of Springfield should be facilitated amongst the board, for sure.
Yeah.
I agree.
Cindy?
I think it's, uh, just fine. I'm glad to keep in the same individuals. They've done a lot of work already. They're pretty familiar with the village, so it's, you know, I'm all for it.
Yeah, I just wanna add, Dave, that, to, to what Diane asked. Orland Park has two lobbyists, and I think this fee is probably about forty percent of what the two of them together in Orland Park make, and lobbyist of Oak Lawn, who's in same comparison roughly in size of us.
Yeah, it's definitely below the market. The last two towns I've managed, they, they got lobbyists and they.
And a lot of the, and a lot of the work they did with you on the mental health center isn't even part of their agreement as well, which they never charged.
Should we get extra fees on top of the standard fee, or is, do they do extra? Or is it three thousand a month and they do everything?
It's a planned fee, it's a retainer.
Okay.
So that retainer covers everything they do.
Even when they work for free. So you need, uh?
Motion to move it to the September fifteenth.
I'll make that motion.
Have a second?
I'll second it.
I'll give that one to Brennan. He started the speech. Bill, you had a lot of caffeine, huh?
So do we, can you call the roll?
Trustee Berg?
Yes.
Trustee Brady?
Yes.
Trustee Brennan?
Yes.
Trustee Galante?
Yes.
Trustee Glotz?
Yes.
Trustee Mueller?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries. Item eight, social media. Who's taking this one?
I'm taking that one. I have put in front of you, as you know, we have several village, uh, social media platforms for the village, three Facebook pages, a Twitter feed, Instagram page, a LinkedIn page, and I have in front of you tonight the social media policy that we drafted a couple of years ago, actually, when we started in the social media, into the social media arena. I'm bringing it for you for, to make it official for approval.
Uh, Dave, do you have anything to add before I go?
No.
Only thing I, I, not only, a couple suggestions on this policy. I, I would like to change is so that we stay consistent. If you read number six and nine, everything is for approval of the village manager. And then on one, number five, and number seven, we don't. We just put marketing director. So the only thing I would like to put on there, especially in case you're, if you're on vacation or you're off or unreachable, I'd like to add to those numbers, number one, number five, and number seven, village manager and assistant village manager.
I'll tell you, the only reason it's like that is because that's the day-to-day stuff that's being reflected in there. So that's more of like the procedure for approving the, the stuff that is coming through in the day-to-day. Everything funnels up through the village manager.
And then number ten? I, I struggle with that one, because if I'm reading it correctly, we're s- we're basically telling an employee if they're, if they're not at work in their home, that they basically have to adhere to all these rules, and I, I, by doing that, I, I think we're looking for freedom of speech problems.
You think it should be in the HR manual, that section or something, for the employees?
When you're, when, when you're off of work, I, I don't see how we could.
I mean, a couple of things. This will be, yeah, we're revising the HR, and we can certainly add this, but this is really referring to, basically, telling employees that they have, they're representatives of the village, and they're representing the village while you're here, and they're representing it while you're at Jewel or wherever you're at, and that you have to conduct yourself properly. So I, this is, I understand, is pretty standard in these type of rules, and I, I don't think it's an unreasonable expectation to just ask people to be kind of mindful that they're, they're representatives both on and off the job.
I don't know if PJM wants to weigh in on this, he was very helpful in crafting this.
Yeah, I mean, we wrote it. I think we're okay with it. We can look at it and a little bit more if you want, Trustee Glotz. A little more in depth to make sure that it's okay, but I think generally the principle of, you know, representing the village out of the community through social media or otherwise is, is, is not unreasonable, I don't believe, but we can double, we can double check that.
So what do you need, Dave?
Well, it sounds like you wanted to make a couple of changes.
Should I make a motion to amend it, or?
Well, can we can fit, finish some discussion?
Go ahead.
I want, I'm against changing this section. This is in my company's, our, our policy too, that you have to conduct yourself, you know, when you're representing your business. So that I'm fine with. And I think, I'm, I'm not sure about your original change, because I didn't understand that one. Do we go? When, if it's to have a backup, to allow other people to authorize stuff. What, that I don't under, I didn't.
On number nine?
What's the question on number nine?
Yeah, I'm not sure the change.
Mike, what'd you want to change on number nine?
I don't want to change anything. I didn't want to change anything on number nine.
I thought you said.
Number ten, I thought.
Which one, ten?
Number ten. Is that with the one you were referring to?
What's the first three numbers you said on here? Three, five?
One, five, and seven, he wants the manager and assistant manager.
Thank you. One, five, and seven.
Consistent.
Same as six and nine. I repeat it again.
Thank you.
Anything else?
No, I mean, I do think, I mean, we can look at the, at the one, five, and seven section and ask you on more review, but I, to me, I think this should be something adopted by the board. If you're comfortable, you can put it on the, to use.
Sure.
Just a quick question, ask her.
Yeah, go ahead.
What is the village's policy regarding comments made, I'm reading to the mental, comments, comments made? Do we utilize the functions that Facebook allow in regards to reporting? Specific comments is spam or harassing or irrelevant or anything like that?
We have our filter for Facebook set at the highest, so that'll automatically eliminate any cuss words, any, you know, foul or vulgar language.
Done that, or is that something we've done since its inception?
Since its inception. We have been doing that. We have, our practice is to never delete anything. On occasion, there have been a couple of things where there have been harassment towards some of our businesses,
Right.
in which case we have sought counsel, sought counsel, and then have deleted it.
Okay, so that is our practice, huh?
Correct. As a public forum, we don't, very rarely, if ever.
Anything else, Jake?
No, that's it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so do we have, uh, do we have a motion to move as amended?
We're moving it as amended, you said?
Yeah.
Motion to have it amended.
We'll make the cha, we'll make the changes we heard. If you want to move it to your next meeting, we'll incorporate what we heard and have it for you to vote on on the fifteenth.
Yeah.
If that's, if you can reflect that, if that's what you want us to do, reflect that in motion.
Well, no.
Perfect. Uh, number nine, resourcing communication.
We need a motion now, we need a motion now.
I'll make a motion to have it amended and brought to the village board on September fifteenth.
Second?
Second.
You take a roll?
Trustee, yes, trustee Berg?
Yes.
Trustee Brady?
Yes.
Trustee Brennan?
Yes.
Trustee Galante?
No, I don't want to vote, no.
Yes.
Trustee Glotz says yes. Trustee Mueller?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. Item number nine, resource communication. Who's doing that one?
I'll do it. So, um, this was a recent discussion at marketing committee. We're looking for kind of board feedback on promoting special events on communication channels. You know, we've been doing this periodically, and there's been some questions. We want to continue it, we want to develop guidelines. The second part of it is really, and it's related, is, is trustee communication with residents and kind of getting consistent communication and allowing everybody the opportunity to have that. We used to, in the old days, have a, a regular newsletter. Trustees used to have columns. Obviously, we stopped doing that a few years ago. But, you know, we've done something like back about six months ago, everyone did a video on COVID-nineteen. So, some feedback in that. And I do have a recommendation, just, you know, like general feedback on is that I think somebody see, you know, occasionally, there's a for the record column, undermining. The idea I, we had is, is to have trustees occasionally talk about topics under their committee, whether it be the budget, development project, a public works project, and kind of give everybody the opportunity to do that. That goes out both on our email blast list and also on our Facebook page.
All of our communication?
All of our communication channels. So those are really the two things we were looking for feedback from the board.
Thanks.
Trustee?
Can I? I'd like to address this, Dave.
Sure.
In taking your notes here, just the idea, I know that this all came about because of presentation of the assessor's office. And I look at it this way, is that I saw the, the posting of it. My picture wasn't there, and that was okay, because I wasn't part of it, okay? I did show up, I learned a lot. I, all I did was stand up, wave, said hello, and sat back down again, and then listened for an hour and forty-five minutes, and learned a lot. I, I, I don't see a problem with that. I don't have a problem with it. My name wasn't there, my picture wasn't there, but I was there. And you mentioned on here about how about limits, and how many one trustees can use the channels to promote a project or an event in a year. Well, if you have, if you're out there doing the job, okay, and that is promoting different things to help, I, I think we took two days to decide Tinley first, and that we should be able to do as many as we need to get the word out to help our, our citizens, especially in this type of incident, the seniors, or a lot of seniors that were there. They had a lot of good questions, and I know it was done for Will County, but I, I, I hear now that there's gonna be another one done for Cook County, which would be a great asset for helping our citizens understand, as simple as it is, you know, I mean, many people can just go home and do it on their own computer, but you're not gonna have that through a lot of people. I, I, I know you have an alternative idea. I think we should add that to it. I, I don't think we should make a complete one-eighty on it, but I think that, uh, I find no problem with currently what we're doing.
Thanks, Bill. Trustee Brennan, anything? No, I, I'll just kind of piggyback on what Bill said. I think that, you know, we can, you know, some of our, we're, we're all liaison for certain departments, I think, that we could help, you know, get word out with certain departments, you know, better for the liaison or whatever your department you're overseeing. I think that, you know, if we could do a little bit more of that, I think that would be helpful. I think, you know, some of these ideas in here are great, but I think that, you know, I don't think there should be a limit on it. You know, I think you get what you put in, and, you know, if you wanna put in more work, then, you know, great, then that's, you're prerogative, I guess, so, that's my take on it.
Mike? Yeah, I agree. We, we got elected to help the residents, and that's what we're up here trying to do. I think the, the guidelines that Donna put together are largely fine, and I think we should stick with that. And if we wanna promote individual departments or through the liaison program that Bill was talking about, I think that'd be great too. But short of that, I don't, I don't see any other changes being necessary.
Jake?
Thank you. A common word that's, that's written inside this memo is communication. Obviously, we're talking about communication. I think the problem really lies in this, is that topics that have been presented via video, social media, trustee Brady brought up the assessors, I mean, it, it just needs to be, it needs to be spread across all of the elected officials, not just in certain individuals. So I don't have a problem with people getting in front of a camera and doing informative information for the residents. Like Mike just mentioned, we're here as elected officials to help put out the information, offer assistance where we're able to. I think there's a very fine line, which is not mentioned in here, when, with mixing politics and government, and specifically when it came to COVID-nineteen. As elected officials, you're entitled to your own opinion, clearly. Unfortunately, we're, we're elected by sixty thousand residents, and fifty percent didn't agree with the mandate set forth by the governor, fifty percent agreed with the mandate set for, set forth by the governor. And then when individuals get up and use public platforms and speak their own opinions, that sets off the fifty percent that are approving of the mandates, and then the fifty percent that are not. So I think there's a very distinct decision that needs to be made to allow for opinionated information to be used on a public platform. And I just feel that that's doing a worse, or a, a disservice to the community as opposed to helping them, because it kind of alienates the fifty percent that disagree with that. And I think that we should do a better job of trying to bring that together, so. That's my own two cents on it. Again, I don't have a problem with individuals using social media platforms by this government. I just have a problem with it being done in a borderline political way. So I'll leave it at that.
I'm gonna agree with that. I don't believe the first issue was the tax seminar. I think it was, as a trustee for myself, watching videos come out that I didn't believe were, was a message that was unified by this board. And then I was told, well, I can come in here and create my own video, but I guess I missed that training, because nobody ever trained me to come in here and where the, the equipment even is. And I think it's a really bad practice that we start sending things out of the village, and then if we link them to political websites, you know, we, to our personal pages, it doesn't look good. Especially, you know, even having our, you got trustee and then your political name on shirts, and we're posting pictures, and it just, to me, is just setting us up for lawsuits. One of my biggest concerns is stopping the dollars we are spending on lawsuits and trying to create policies and procedures that will actually address that and stop it from going on in the future. I agree. We're one board. We should have one common message. We shouldn't be sending duplicate messages, opposite, opposite ends messages, and then watching our residents fight. And we certainly should not be in that, in the middle of it. It just doesn't look right. I, I believe that we should, I, I don't have a problem with people doing different things and sending it out. The mayor, I see, do podcasts. I, I see different things. I just don't think we should be making it anything political. It's gotta stay out of that. I'm not saying what you guys, that offering a tax seminar is great. I just don't understand why we don't, we don't work as a team. We're, we're gonna divide ourselves and be on opposite sides, and we're gonna accomplish that much less. I think we should all, communication is key to any good team, and we gotta have good communication. We know what's going on. Otherwise, I think we're weak in. We know what's going on. Otherwise, I think we're a weakened board, for some.
Cindy?
Well, I'll stand by my first comments. United we stand, divided we fall.
Is that it?
Well, in today's times, we may have very significant problems in the future of Tinley. We don't know what's going on in our Chicagoland area, Kenosha. Well, I mean, we need to stick together. So, hopefully, we can all communicate.
Thanks, Cindy.
Mike, do you mind if I just add something?
Yeah, go ahead.
I mean, I, I agree wholeheartedly with what Jake said. I think, you know, opinions shouldn't be on our village's social media page or whatever. We all have different opinions up here. We were all elected by the sixty thousand residents, but I, I think that an issue like that, something to help the residents, I don't, I don't believe that falls under your opinion. I think that's just a, you know, a gesture that some of our elected officials were doing a little bit extra to, to help the other residents. I don't think there was any opinions involved in that, so I just want to, you know, be clear that anything that we can potentially use to help our residents, I think we can and should be able to, to get the message out there. So, but I do agree with what Jake said, so.
Thanks, Bill. I'll go. Well, many things I wasn't going to discuss, but I, I think now I will address them, because they were brought up. Dave, have you, have you offered yours or your staff assistance in the past to help Diane with putting any type of messages together?
Uh, yes.
Has she taken you up on them in the past?
Well, right now, we're working on an article.
In the past?
Maybe because I said, I didn't think it was...
Diane, I have the floor.
Well, if you're going to bring me into it, I should be able to respond.
No, I mean, other than obviously the social, the video that everybody did for COVID, that's...
So, I mean, reading this, it, it appears in this memo, and after what you just said to confirm it, Diane finally agreed to let staff put together an article for her, and marketing is working with finance for this article. She will be the author, and nobody on this board that I'm aware of has been invited to assist or informed by her. I fully support it, because she is finance chair, and that's what we should be doing. I recommend, I commend you, Dave, on offering to put her name to that. I'm sure it'll be great, because I'm sure Brad's and Andrew are doing, are, are working hard to put it together. The, the part that's confusing for me to hear is just, a couple of weeks ago, I, I sat up here, as the same individual said, she's, she's getting pushback from staff, and she can't get any answers. She wants to create her own citizen committee to see if they agree with her ideas before she moves them forward to the board. It's got to be one of the oddest requests that I've ever seen or heard of. You're elected to make decisions. I'm not quite sure what your unofficial committee would accomplish when you have Dave, management, and you have finance at your fingertips. And then at the marketing meeting, Donna asked if we want to utilize our village resources to promote events like the Will County Tax Seminar. And should be, we be including names or make it a village-sponsored event? This is where I, I think most of the problem is, because some don't really want to do it and put the time into it, but, but they want to be included for work that others have done. I'll address it point by point to make it a little easier to follow along. Utilize village resources. This is the main reason, why a lot of you guys have mentioned, why we're all here to, to serve the residents of Tinley Park. You should want to use the village's resources to reach and help your neighbors. If you don't, why are you even here? The second point of it was, names are a village event. How can we make it a village event when staff knows absolutely nothing about the topic? They're going to be receiving phone calls from residents asking about it. They don't know who's going to be doing it. They don't know, they don't know anything about it. So, we're going to take time away from staff to answer phone calls from residents in Will County that have no involvement in it. Cindy, you, you've been on the board for over three years, and Diane, you've been on the board for well over a year. The mayor's been doing his Dan Patlick Board of Review Seminar for the last three years with Lucas. The last one that he did was on November twenty-first, two thousand nineteen. And you guys, and you were both on the board. I've actually, I think, the one in two thousand eighteen, I attended the one that Jake had. I showed up. I was there probably fifteen minutes, and I left. I supported it. He did it. It was in his name. None of us were included. I didn't expect to be included. It was his deal, and that was good for the residents. Did you, did you ask to be on his event too? No, I don't think you guys did. I don't think it was a problem. I, I don't think you guys complained about it, but now we're complaining about helping the people in Will County. None of us were included, at least that I know of. I wasn't, and I, I think they did a great job with it. Jake does speeches at village events. He speaks for us because he's the mayor. Do I agree with everything that he says? No, but I support him because he's the mayor. He made decisions during the pandemic for the board. He did not poll the board, but he still made decisions, which I fully supported every decision that he made. He's the mayor. He made decisions. He actually, he asked my opinion on one of his decisions, and I appreciated it, but he didn't poll the board. It's just, there's, there's no ill will being done. He also does private videos, which is his own business, which I compare to the unofficial capacity tax seminar and other things that we do. Nobody has ever said a word, but, but now it's a problem, because you're not included. Myself, trustee Brady, and any other board member have never been asked to be included in any of this, and I'm fine with it. What have you guys, what have you guys done that you've included anyone else on this board? I, I, I don't know of one thing that you've included anyone on the board. You get out of this what you put into it. If you put a hundred percent, you get a hundred percent back. If you put twenty-five percent, you get twenty-five. If you get ten, you get ten. If you do none, then you get zero. Like Dave said, Facebook came long before this board was here. They had their own columns. They had a village newsletter. It's unfortunately, it's not staff's fault. Times have changed. Facebook has taken over the world, so now there's a new way for staff to get the word out for what's going on. The Will County Tax Seminar was arranged and planned by the three of us. So, are you, you're requesting to be included on things that you had absolutely nothing to do about? You didn't even ask to help. Bill Brady, Bill Brennan, they had nothing to do with the seminar, and neither of them were included on the flyer. Not one of them said one thing to Dave about it. Bill Brady, as he said, decided to come himself and support it, and he actually learned something. So, if you moved to Will County, now you could do your own taxes.
Yes.
Why didn't you come? You knew about it. Did staff attend these events? They weren't, none of them had to attend. Did staff run it or field phone calls? Not one of the staff members had to take one second out of their day to field phone calls for this. Did staff set up the time or schedule or date or location or the speaker? Nope, they didn't do anything. And then your other comment about the equipment, no one taught, no one showed you how to use equipment. There was no equipment, because we did the work ourselves. We spent the time. We filmed it. We edited. We gave it to Dave for approval. He approved it, and it was posted. So, it's not like this was posted on anybody on their own. Pat Carr, he's, he's acknowledged staff, volunteers, the mayor, myself, and anyone else that was involved with the senior citizen group. That was okay. Diane, you said to Mike Mueller, you've participated in these tax seminars in years past and would have gone for him. I'd like to clarify that. You were running for office when you came. You showed up, but you didn't help any of them do any of the taxes. You, it's, you make it seem like you were in there doing it with them. You didn't help with do one single tax comparable. As Mike and Kristen sat there for three to four hours doing them.
I appreciate you asking me to...
Dave invited, Dave invited you to the Will County Seminar on July eleventh. I invited you on July twelfth, and you didn't come or respond, but you're saying you weren't included. That is just not true. I believe our jobs are to help as many residents as possible. I'm not going to change that, because you weren't involved. You had an email nineteen days prior to the event by the village manager and myself. So, for you to say that you weren't involved, and you weren't invited, and it's the first you heard of it, is just not true, Diane.
Never said that.
You did say it. Again, Diane, Dave invited you to the seminar. You didn't come. I offered to help you do one of these videos. It is. I, I, I sent you an email. I offered to help you, if you win it, if you needed help with a con, with a topic. I offered my time to help you with the topic. I offered to help you write it. I offered to help you film it. I offered to help you even edit it, Diane, and you didn't respond. Dave also did the same thing. The seminar was July twenty-ninth, and neither of you showed up to it. So, why you should be a part of it, I, I'm, I can't, I, I can't find an answer on what you're thinking with that. Bottom line, at the end of the day, nothing is done in this village by staff or elected officials without the approval of the village manager, Dave Niemeyer. Nobody went and did something and posted it on their own. It was approved by Dave Niemeyer after he was okay with whatever someone was doing. You stated there should be a consistent message going out. We should all work together and include everybody. In your sixteen months on the board, what have you included, anyone on this board, to make it one? You come to the meetings. You, you talk about being together and being one. You don't speak to any of us. We say hi. You leave. You, you don't speak to anybody, so for you to say that is very concerning to me.
Okay, can I finish? Can I have a comment? No?
Go ahead.
Okay, my issue with this was that the fact that, when I was part of One Tinley Park, a political group, we paid for this. We worked it. No, I was not in the room with them working on taxes, because you asked me to work the door, and I was sending people to the seminar. I was there all day, every single time you did it. The payment for those things was One Tinley Park. Everything, the shirts, everything was One Tinley Park. My issue with you doing it is that now that you're on the board, I didn't understand why the village, even though it's my party, One Tinley Park, that I, I ran on, I didn't think it was right that the village is now going to pay for any of it, because I believe it was a political cost. My issue was not with that. My issue was coming home to, to a video that Kristen and you both put out. What I felt was it going against the governor's wishes, in my opinion, and I had, was shocked to see it come out. That's what asked, made me ask about this. I do not think it's right that people come in here, sit in their seats, and create a message, and none of us are aware of it. I don't need to be on your flyer. That's not my point. We all do our own things. I may not take pictures of everything I do and put it out there, but we are all doing things in this, in this village. That's all I have to say. That is just not true what you're saying. I don't want to be on your flyer.
I could give you the emails.
Go ahead. I have a lot of emails too.
So, what do you need, Dave? You need someone to want to approve this?
Uh, no, I mean, I think I interest, basically, the, I, I do think there's probably at least consensus on the topic of doing a regular columns for committees over for that. I think I, the majority of the board is, I think, okay with how we're appreciating the sponsorship, so we'll...
Can you send out communication if, if one individual is asked to put out a video?
My mic's not on, sorry. If an elected official asks to put out a video, inform the rest of the board that that's happening before the video goes out.
Jake, are you serious? I intentionally didn't go down that path, trying to be respectful to you. When you put the village in harm's way with your, with your conference outside with the KKK, did you include anyone from staff or any of the board members? No. When you went to the village hall, or you went to the Paul McCartney concert to give him the dinner plate, none of us were informed or invited. Marketing could have blew that thing out of the water for you. No one was included in any of it. So, now to, to hear you say exactly opposite of what you're doing is very concerning. So...
Well, I, I mean, I, I believe in turning the page, right, and believing in the fact that if we're trying to make a better government than what it was before we, the day before, or even the week before? So, wouldn't this be an opportunity to make it an inclusive situation? It was just a suggestion, that's all.
Item ten, LED street lighting. John, you want to take that one?
Yes, sir. Thank you. What you have in front of you here is a multi-portion request for LED upgrades. We have in subsection A of this request involves the LED street lighting replacement on Hundred and Fifty-Ninth Street. This project is being presented in conjunction with the project that Orland Park has submitted to IDOT for the replacement of the LED streetlights on their portion of the road, and we're trying to piggyback off of the IDOT permit, so we didn't have to submit it separately. And then this, this portion would be a hundred and forty-three new fixtures that runs from Eighty-Sixth Avenue to Oak Park Avenue. We are looking at the possibility of getting reimbursement through the TIF in the area of Oak Park Avenue and Hundred and Fifty-Ninth to offset some of those costs, but this project follows along the bid that was received previously from our contractor with Lyons View of Illinois, and that cost would be at ninety-eight thousand, two hundred dollars. That's for subsection A of this request. Subsection B is broken up in three parts, four, four A and four B. Four is our annual replacement phasing that we have in the areas of Hundred and Seventy-Ninth to Hundred and Seventy-Second and Bridlewood Lane to Sixty-Second Avenue. That phase four is in the budgeted cost of three hundred and ten thousand dollars. This would be extending our current contract for an additional year. The contract was bid out with the ability to extend for multiple years. This is the first year of two-year extensions. Along with that, we also looked at the possibility of replacing Phase four A, which is on Oak Park Avenue between Tinley Park Drive to Hickory Street. That's in the cost of a hundred and fifteen thousand, six hundred dollars, and then that's being allocated towards the TIF in that area. And then four B is the cost of two hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars on Oak Park Avenue between Hundred and Seventy-Second Street to Hundred and Seventy-Eighth Street. That area is also being recommended to be funded by the New Bremen TIF for that area. All of these are budgeted items, and we're looking for approval to move to the board for, a recommendation and move to the board for approval.
Thanks, John. Any questions on the LEDs?
Want to make a motion? Great, great job.
Thank you.
We're moving it to the board tonight, or what are we?
Uh, I believe it's on, on the fifteenth agenda.
So, I'll make a motion to move the LED program to the village board tonight.
Do you have a second?
Fifteenth, sorry.
Fifteenth, I'm sorry. The fifteenth.
Okay.
Thanks, Bill. Could you take a roll?
Trustee Berg?
Yes.
Trustee Brady?
Yes.
Trustee Brennan?
Yes.
Trustee Galante?
Yes.
Trustee Glot?
Yes.
Trustee Mueller?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. item eleven, receive comments from the public. Would anyone like to address the committee of the hall?
So, I'm looking at two different times here. My name is Imchastragala. This is in regards to Fox College. Have you guys spoken about... Have you guys spoken about Fox College yet?
It's gonna be...
That's on the, that's on the board meeting next.
Next. Stand up. When is next, like, after today, or?
As soon as we stop this meeting, it'll probably be five minutes for the cameraman, and then restart again. Sorry. Sure.
It was mentioned about the Dan Patlick seminars. I just want to make a point of reference for transparency, that those are not put on by myself, and I've asked if it's okay to advertise that it's being functioned by the Tinley Park Village Board. This is a practice that's been going on before myself as mayor, going back at least to former mayor's Rocky. So, I just want, for full transparency, that that's not a request that I'm putting in at all. That's all. Thank you.
Thanks. Is there any, do we have to ask, like, telephonically, since everyone's here?
There, there are more of us.
Oh, okay. I'll make a motion to adjourn the special committee of the whole at eight seventeen PM. Have a second?
Second.
Please call the roll.
Trustee Burke?
Yes.
Trustee Brady?
Yes.
Trustee Brennan?
Yes.
Trustee Galante?
Yes.
Trustee Glutz?
Yes.
Trustee Mueller?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries.